No. Good evening, we are gonna call this meeting to order. It is August sixth and six oh two P M. We have three people in the on the board in in attendance. Nobody's online right now, so we are yet with a quorum. We're gonna still move ahead. Adjustments to the agenda, I have one adjustment. That at the end of the meeting, I do need to step down as chairs. I'm gonna officially do that at the end of the meeting. I'm very hopeful we will get a quorum to actually have a vote to vote in a new chair. But we'll see if that happens. We will forego approving minutes from eight six also since we don't have a quorum. And then any public comments? We don't have anybody online. Brian, Stephanie, Molly, Harry, no public comment. Okay. So we are gonna go ahead and continue the bylaw analysis. And go back with the three board members, somebody online, Matt, alright. Matt, welcome aboard. Thank you for joining. Both Brad and Mary Margaret were not able to attend tonight. So we'll see if Alex joins us, but you make quorum, which is great. Does anybody have any comments? We're gonna go back to approve the minutes. Does anybody have any comments from the meeting from the last minute, from the last meeting? If not, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Second in by Sarah. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Matt gave a thumb up. That's four. Motion passes. Matt, right before he came on, I mentioned that I have to officially step down as chair at the end of this meeting, so we'll call a vote. We'll see if Alex joins on. So I'll step down and we'll call a vote to nominate a new chair. We're gonna go through the zoning bylaw edits. Laura, welcome. And we I'm not gonna set a specific time limit, but I'm gonna try to keep each item relatively short. So if it goes beyond, you know, three or five minutes, and it doesn't seem like we're gonna get anywhere, we will put a pin in it just so that we can kind of sleep on it, do some back or off hours work on it to kind of resolve and move things ahead rather than working through every single issue as we go through. One thing I do wanna just kind of remind people that we're doing the village zoning regulations. And I know you put the zoning map on there, which is very helpful in my mind, because it just kind of focuses that, you know, there are a lot of issues with our zoning, but a lot of issues aren't as visible or pertinent to the village zoning regulations, just because it's such a small area. So I think keeping in mind that our goal here is really to increase the ability to have housing, increase density and housing. And I think both everybody agrees that the best place to do that is in the village. So I think keeping that in mind when we look at a lot of these zoning regulations and wanting to change things or make them stricter. I think we should have just a little bit more flexibility in the zoning for the village versus the town. So. Yeah. Yeah, go for it.
I just wanted to reiterate about the point. And more or less to remind everybody that this is the work we're doing now is mandated by both the test fees and the flat board. This is like something that's one of our goals, objectives that we did all last year. And so, you know, I know that we all have it in mind, but just to frame the conversation, we're doing this for not only so that the bylaws are way more usable and user friendly, which is something that I think anybody who's had to go through coming, especially us, or especially if they're looking for how to build something, anybody knows or certainly not. But also the benefit point is to encourage smart growth, housing development in a way that makes sense for us to comply with state regulations. Thankfully, we have like Harry who's stayed up on so many things for us and make sure that our bylaws catch what the current state regulations are. But also to minimize our liability, which we've been lucky enough to kind of avoid in a lot of places, but really to, I think, minimize any vague or ambiguous language, which could, which poses a risk to the municipality. So anyway, thank you, Ben. Sorry, I just wanted to.
No, that's great.
Underline.
Perfect. So we're gonna start with section one, which is all of the definitions. And I guess it makes sense to try to kind of go through chronologically right through just to see if anybody has any issues. And we'll see how we can kind of keep this moving. I have kind of a comment on page, and I guess we'll reference the page numbers that are on the documents. So first page is page five for the article one. So my first editor or conversation point is on seven. Does anybody have anything in the first couple pages?
I have two little things on six. For the definition of butter. To clarify properties which would be contiguous to the property subject to development, but for the interposition of a highway or other public right of way across the street neighbor. Is that what we're talking about? Okay. Is there any simpler way to state that it just feels
Is that a state definition?
It felt like an absolute legal thing.
No, I mean.
It's just such a convoluted way to say, including the people across the street.
Okay.
Like it just to be clear with things.
Yeah, I mean, we like to use the state definitions where there are one about sure if that is one or not.
Yeah.
So.
If we could just double check that one to for clarity. The definition of acre, isn't that a standard definition? And do we need to define that within if that is, are we using anything other than the standard American definition of acre?
Okay.
Um, and oh, administrative permit, I don't believe means to start with a verb. I think to be consistent with the other definitions, it should just start with a capital A, a permit issued by.
I put for that one too, that we don't define any other type of review. Or add the other rules to find the other types of review. I don't know if it matters. Yeah.
That, you mean, under that or?
Just in general, there's no definition for conditional.
Oh, yeah.
You, that's the only one we define.
It's weird.
We should probably actually define conditional use, because I think that that's probably something that's not, unless you live in this world, it's not something new.
Yeah, that is a very good catch.
And just so you know, up in accessory dwelling, A D U, I know y'all changed that to thirty percent, but just so you know, the town is still fifty percent and fifteen hundred square feet.
Okay, so there is gonna be a discrepancy with the town versus. And then a little thing on seven. Let's see if this is maybe you are addressing this as well, Ben. For affordable housing. I would just like to insert the word state before definition in accordance with the state's definition given. And I realize that the V S A means Vermont, but I think if you're not used to like referring to state laws and it would just kind of make it a little easier for just the average Joe to understand what you're referring to.
Okay.
Like, I'm trying to read it as like someone who doesn't ever do this.
Noted, yep. My comment, and I'll probably pin it for later, is also on affordable housing development. I saw that the state or has, you know, in some cases it's fifteen years, some cases it's ninety nine years as far as what, how long the affordable housing development has to retain. I'm sure what constitutes, you know, choosing fifteen years or ninety nine years, whatever that is. But the, my questions mostly come in when we talk about the bonus. I'll wait till that comes up later in the Anything else on seven, eight?
Can we match bed and breakfast definition to the new short memo? Which says three to nine units. And it makes it very specifically.
Three to nine years being the definition of bed and breakfast.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I also looked in section forty three or three for butter, and there isn't one in there. I don't think you get a free answer. Right. Mary Margaret had several things in definitions, but again, if you read through her comments, I'm waiting till she is in attendance to go through those, so we don't have to reopen the conversation. Yeah, I remember there being a lot of definite. Yes. Both from her. We also got some written feedback from Charlie Kimball as well, and some other people that dove a lot into kind of the nuts and bolts and semantic stuff that I wasn't, wasn't touched as much in the, in the first brand revision, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Page nine, page ten.
Page nine, oh, drive in, stand. So first of all, is there a difference between a drive in and a drive through? Drive in is like a movie theater, drive through is like the banks and fast food places. Which are we regulating?
You know, like many things in this bylaw, I'm not sure if this actually appears anywhere else in the texts.
Can we just strike it?
If, if it doesn't appear anywhere else, then sure, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I bet.
Headmark hotel in on beach ten, but also match the definition.
Is that ten rooms or more, is that?
Yeah. And then also, Harry, I'm gonna send you, I didn't get a chance to do it beforehand, but there's just like some punctuation and stuff that I want to send over. It's just nitpicky. Don't need to discuss it.
Yeah, if anyone has stuff like that, just like semantic stuff or grammatical stuff, you can just send it to me in writing too. Not stuff I was really paying attention to the first time around, but if it's more likely that you'll catch it than it, so. Please send it. Page eleven, I just had a question. Are these, we actually have hyperlinks in the online version, so like.
I have that same question.
He had B S A in the notes as hyperlink. If like if we actually click on that, we'll like go to. Yes, yeah. You have to control click on the video. Okay. Okay. I think that's cool. And I try, started to wherever possible, but it's hard to tell where the red text is here in this, but where the, the actual text, not the notes, is also hyperlink. You just can't tell because it's in red. And we like to do that throughout that too with bylaws.
Oh, I have a question about the definition of lot. Seems silly, but.
Not that important.
Single parcel of land which is not divided by a public street. Not so much in the village, but I know in the town, there are several parcels of land that span streets.
So I think that has to do with natural subdivision regulations around the state level. If a parcel is divided by a public road, then it's legally two parcels.
Okay.
So for our purposes, for zoning purposes, we consider it one parcel, but for tax purposes, I think it can be considered two separate parcels, and the person who owns those parcels has the right to sell one of them without getting subdivision. So that's a safe thing.
That's really interesting. Thank you.
Does the, does the butterless like stop at the road too? So if you own the other side of the road, it would protect you from the butters that are. Well, but for the imposition of a public highway. Okay.
In our map system, the parcels are considered connected, but we believe that.
Okay, moving on. Page twelve, I know we were trying to fund potentially the conversation of the mobile manufacturing home park without trying to pitch them in a district. Looking at the zoning map, Carrie, I kind of want your opinion. If you think this is something that we should really try to label into a certain district. I'm just gonna put forth, you know, commercial light industrial and light commercial are probably like the least. Well, the least amount of upper I could see by the community of if we actually had to decide a district to put it in. Does everyone understand the issue that we're talking about? So. Just to be clear. Yeah, to rephrase, so since we don't state a district that mobile park homes are allowed, essentially it means they're allowed in all districts. So we can leave it as is and just let it ride because we don't think it's gonna cause an issue, or we can go ahead and decide what districts, zoning districts who want to allow mobile home parks, knowing that that could potentially a fiery conversation, because people will think that we're pushing it towards a certain district. When in reality, it's allowed everywhere right now. So I don't know if you think it's worth really. As long as the commission is comfortable with the knowledge that in practice, if someone were to propose it somewhere, it would technically have to be allowed. Which is the way that it is right now. Yeah. Then you don't have to do anything, but you just have to, you should know that that, that is the case, right? So everyone, this is because of Vermont's equal treatment of housing law. So no bylaw, and because you have a separate village bylaw and town bylaw, that means no bylaw can have the effect of prohibiting mobile home parks in the entire area that the bylaw governs, right? Which means that in practice, you have to allow them somewhere in some district where it's actually feasible to build a mobile home park. Or the converse of that or inverse of that is that in effect, they're allowed everywhere. And because there is no place in the use schedule in article three where manufactured home parks are allowed, that means essentially they're allowed everywhere right now.
Well, except in the districts where only a certain number of households are allowed for lots. So you wouldn't be able to have a park because that would be multiple households on a lot that isn't allowed to have them.
Mobile home parks are kind of their own unique.
Like you could have a standalone mobile home on a lot that you own.
You could, and.
But that's different from a mobile home park.
Correct, yeah. Mobile home parks are kind of their own thing in state statute. I don't know if we can pull that up, Brian, but. Yeah, it's in a different chapter. A lot of bylaws in towns where they, they have accommodated this essentially or thought of this have their own sort of density requirements and almost like, almost like sightline requirements for mobile home parks. So in terms of like how far apart they should be, whether there's screening, how the internal roads are laid out, utilities, stuff like that. So they're almost like land residential developments or stuff that we have in the bylaws now, like they're, they're really their own kind of beast and the the density requirements that otherwise apply in the district are not necessarily how that works. Did you find something? Yeah, you have to go to a different chapter from chapter on seventeen. So mobile home park means any parcel of land under single or common ownership. So it's one parcel or control that contains or is designed, laid out, or adapted to accommodate more than two mobile homes. Okay, yeah. But the other, the other part of that, what, what you're alluding to, I think the other part of the equal treatment of housing law is that anywhere you can build a single family home, you can, you can put a manufacturer home. In other words, towns can't just ban manufactured homes because they don't like them or they think they're illegal or whatever. So like, if you're allowed to build a single family home there, you can also plop down a mobile home.
Except in design overlay district.
Everything else notwithstanding, you still have to go.
Right.
Be beholden to setbacks and all the other standards that we're reviewing in the bylaws.
Correct, yeah. So the standard in statute to exclude a mobile home or modular housing or prefabricated housing from the municipality can only be done under the same conditions as conventional housing is excluded. So if you had a district where no housing allowed, you could exclude them. Right, like an industrial park or something like that. Yeah, I don't really have any further. It's your decision, obviously. I don't have any further advice or recommendations on that. I mean, basically, do you want to just keep steps close, or do you want to potentially go into that nest of vipers, which would emerge if you decided on somewhere to, to put mobile home parks in the use schedule. We would also have to have mobile home park standards probably that say all those things, but I'm just talking about like. I don't want the I don't want it to derail pushing this forward. So if it's gonna open up a nest of vipers and it's gonna cause a big delay, I don't think mobile homes are really the kind of thing that we want to focus our attention on. But if anyone else has a contrary opinion, happy to.
I don't know. I just, if it's, if we think it's important, right, if we're worried about whatever, some aspect of it, do you want, you know, I don't want to just push it to the side as we want to move forward, but
is it something that comes up?
No, no, never.
I feel like with real estate prices as a loan is a deterrent from that happening in the village.
Yes, but it's never from a.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, the point of a mobile home park is to be cheap, right? And when parcel's big enough to be a mobile home park in the village or whatever the one that's currently being sold is almost two million dollars. Yeah. It's not gonna happen. But, you know, you should never do planning based on what you think is probably gonna happen. I mean, you're, you can't, you have to plan to basically the worst case scenario, right? So, but that being said, you know, this is kind of a short term stopgap by law, the process that we're trying to do before we address the town plan and the future legis and all that stuff. So is it, you know, risk versus reward, I guess.
Right.
Alright, so anyone else?
I don't, I, I guess I, yeah, I don't, I'll say it another way. I don't see the use of being more restricted than we are right now. Between now and when we have a chance to look at it further or more in depth. Without trying to that we are now on that side of the board, so.
I will add to, if the goal is eventually, I would hope for, just for administrative purposes, to merge the town and village bylaws at some point. This becomes a much easier question because, you know, you have existing trailer parks in the town. So, you know, people are more near to that. And also there's plenty more space in the town to work with and decide what areas you want to allow it in. And then the issue of allowing it somewhere in the village goes away, so.
So it sounds like it can be that for.
Alright.
Alright.
Moving on.
I have a quick thing on page eleven. The definition of redevelopment, it looks like we've added demolition. Does that mean we're going to establish the following standards? It's for building that would be something that from sucking in design view just.
Yeah. It's not just a sort of building as receipt funding, it's just a big qualifying structure on a sort of preservation. So you actually, adding demolition centers is actually something that I know was missing from this bylaw. We have not fixed it yet, but you were, you were talking to me about this the other day, or Laura was saying about this for the land development specifically, that's missing from the state. And so that's the state's definition there of land development. And they don't know the word demolition in it, but if you go to the section, I think forty three thirteen, it talks about the different types of bylaws that are permitted. You, it says clearly that you can regulate demolition of structures, so you could require a permit for demolition as a type of landfill. It's just this oversight and statute where it's not in that definition there.
Okay, got it.
Well, yes, we should have a demolition section. If that's something you want to regu, well, I guess it is already regulated in the design standards, but because there also are state requirements when you demolish the structure relating to, it's got the, but there's very little oversight of that. So it's often going, or not even going about. But a good reason to have it in the bylaw so that someone knows that this is
Thing, right. It's not really. On page twelve, can we define a minor design review? Did we ever decide if we were gonna add minor?
Twelve.
There's nothing there now.
Oh, I see. Okay. A minor design review?
Yeah.
Which would be what?
The system where if it's not visible from the road, it can be determined by the design advisory committee to come back to us as an administrative permit rather than having to go through the office point. And I think for some reason that got taken out, but then we were not maybe putting it back in.
Isn't later on in the regulations, if it's not visible from the road, it's examined. I was just gonna say that. I think that's maybe in the new draft.
Okay.
Yeah. If you can't see it from the road. Page forty six, I believe, has that.
Define the other review types.
Or, or design. Yeah, the following developmentation that require design approval, exterior changes that cannot be seen from a public road.
Okay. Yes.
We don't have, we have design review district as a definition about design review.
And then most hell, the quickened coffee.
Yep. Alright. Same question, I guess, the off street shopping plaza on page thirteen, it's not in the use schedules. Does that mean we take it out?
Take it out or add it?
Well, so yeah. I've tried to do some digging, and I think this is maybe kind of a great, but Brian, you definitely know more about this than I do, but in general, it's, it's hard to make. You have to be careful about doing stuff that if you're gonna prohibit uses that happen to be based on on not be discriminatory against a certain type of business or anything like that. So, for example, you could hypothetically ban drive-throughs, which I think you may actually already because that's a land use, right? Yeah. You can't say we banned McDonald's because that's a particular business, right? You couldn't say that. Right. So with I'm like, is this, is this a land use? It's hard to say. I mean, but no, yeah, it's not currently in. And I don't know if that's desirable for people. Explore banning that outright or not, but in any case, it's not in the schedule right now. What's your, what's your take on that? I don't actually, I've actually seen this in other towns.
Anywhere else.
Correct, yeah. It also looks familiar, it's defined, it's pretty specific, but for some, like not the reason why for more retail or commercial. I don't know the why hundred feet from the shed, I have no idea. So, well, so similar to that, right? I believe you can ban certain sizes of things, right? So you could ban like a retail step fifty thousand per feet because you can't ban longer, right? So I would think that an off-street shopping plaza, if you're banning it based on the number of units or regulating it based on the number of units hypothetically, that should be okay. Because there's an empirical standard that goes with it. Yeah, I just, no idea why for. Right, why that number out?
Yeah. I, the only thing I was gonna ask was like, I could imagine well-designed commercial development that wasn't a strip mall that was a hundred feet from Village Speed Street and had four or more spaces that we're actually okay with, right? Like, should this be more of a design consideration?
Yeah, and I think a lot of commercial uses, if not all of them, will go through either conditional use review or sightline review. And a lot of the, the new sightline standards are now trying to specifically get away from this, you know, car-centric retail patterns that I think is it's like, people don't, people don't dislike having small stores, right? They dislike having strip mall type stuff, right? So, yeah, I think to your point, I think that's also, I think if you want to keep, you know, not car-centric retail facilities, you know, and keep that out of the village, having a maximum setback accomplishes that better than describing a hundred feet from Village Street.
Yeah.
And this is a definition thing.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah, I like that. I like that.
Oh, it's not an off-street shopping blog with that. Oh, it's not an off-street uh shopping blog with that. Do people wanna think about this more, maybe?
I mean, it seems like we're trying to avoid, like you're saying, the car-centric thing, the parking lot sitting in front of the retail, right? So if there's a way to rework this definition with that in mind, in a more. Clear way than just randomly saying it was a hundred feet, could like. If they were ninety-eight feet about these fine or not considered an off-street shopping block.
Yeah. It wouldn't be considered it, yeah.
Yeah, so I and I even still fed parking at ninety-eight feet. Um, so it seems like it's more about that. Not getting the feeling of. I mean, we need max, right?
But but it'd be nice if like the parking lot was at the back, yeah, and the store was up in the street, so you could walk in easily without getting hit.
And that we would probably all be more fine with, right, for the village, for. Yeah, but is that a design consideration or is that a?
Yeah, well, yeah, I think the technical question we're getting at with this is like, does this go in the dimensional standards, like a maximum setback or? Do we just try to do it through site plan?
No, I think if like places like here used to be, that property used to be. Street mall, way back there, but if that was, you know. Again, I could see realities where like, yeah, we'd want that because it's a grocery store and I don't know. Something else that might, it could work, right, it's like.
There was like.
But also, like, mixed-use development, right? Like, the way that this is phrased, would it preclude building? A development with a bunch of affordable housing and for more. Spaces.
Well, we we have um, we have added mixed-use as its own definition.
Got it, great, okay, cool.
Be like, specifically, it's one, there's a couple of different ways we've addressed that in in this new draft. Um, that are not addressed in the current bylaws. One, one would be the definition of a mixed-use building, which is specifically one building with residential above. Some other commercial use. And then multiple use of lots, which we added a clause for, I think it's in Article Five. That clarifies that you can have multiple structures with multiple uses on the same parcel, provided that each of those uses. Complies with the, you know, dimensional standards and the other regulations, right? So you could have like, I don't know, what's what's an example? I think in the town, that's all one parcel where the um. The liquor store and the garage, right? So that's like, that's like an example of multiple use of lots, right? Um, now for the village, we're making clear that that is something that's allowed as long as all the other requirements are done for each use. So, yeah, we're avoiding that, but yeah, I think this is specifically for just commercial, multiple storefronts.
Um, yeah, I guess, um, let's put a pin in it and keep moving on, I think, think about it, I guess, it doesn't really fall into my mind of. The goal, the edits either, so if we have to spend a lot of time on it, I'd rather focus on. Other things, I don't think we're. Buying into the directive, yet going too deep into this. I mean, I'd rather focus on the mixed-use definition.
Yeah.
Um, and focus on housing and.
Well, why don't you all do some thinking about this, and we'll we'll look into it as well.
Yeah, great. You can also remove it if you don't think it serves purpose.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my kind of initial, I just remove it and. Move on, okay.
Because if you don't, I mean, if you don't specifically call it out by name, it's just gonna go through conditional use and then. You know, they can place any kind of conditions on it.
Yeah.
So, it's kind of a choose your own best.
Anything else on thirteen, fourteen? Page fifteen, I know Mary Margaret had a question about steep slope, but I don't wanna go into too deeply, but I do point out that. Who is on a pretty made a critical areas inventory map that has like what's twenty-five percent or more? Do you guys provide that as a service, like, hey, we need a map of twenty percent or more, like?
Well, first of all, that map is ancient, because I can see our old logo on that. So that's at least twenty years old, probably. Secondly, in our atlas has a layer that you can look at, uh, all different, it'll color code the different.
It will, okay. Alright.
Thirdly, I do actually wanna talk about steep slopes, but we don't need to talk about it in the definitions section, we can talk about it when we get to the overlays. Um, so, more to come on that.
So we, is it possible, as we're talking about, just like how we format this document, though, to um have a hyperlink to the A and R map? Maybe in like a resource section or like an appendix, so that people could.
It's currently on the website, it's the first item, but we can't, I don't think. If we do that, we probably should put a tutorial, because people don't.
Don't know how to use it, okay. You and I can work on that then, let me, we'll put a file in that, but I do think it's a resource, a very good self-help resource, folks.
It's amazing, actually, and it doesn't exist in New Hampshire or other states, there's nothing like state by. So, yeah, we we are better than that, but and and I'll say that on record.
So a lot of ways, but in many ways. What a hyperlink, just for you guys to think about, what a hyperlink makes sense to include in that definition? The steep slope, or would you want it in a separate, like, because if you put it into a, yeah, a separate section.
I think you put it in like the conservation district or at the beginning.
Yeah, we could probably think about, maybe. To think about that.
Yeah, I don't, we don't have time with that, but I do think it's a helpful resource that people can understand what the impact of.
Absolutely.
Instead of having to come in here and see the big maps, well, that's to you guys, and I love that, but I have to teach people on the phone with everybody.
Yes.
Okay, anything else?
In the definition of structure, the town added um signs, fences, pools, like it's a much broader definition. Know if it's okay to throw in some extra things.
I mean, I would.
It's pretty limiting and it confused people.
Yeah.
What's a structure versus a non-structure?
Their implications of that later on in the zoning, every time structures is.
Uh, is that not covered under accessory structure, or does that cause problems for you guys, or?
We agree.
You just, oh, okay. There's some internal debate, okay. It's basically anything that's. Yeah, uh subordinate to a principal structure.
Well, a sign and a fence would be except for anything that leaves it open.
But sign and fence really isn't.
Maybe they do go under accessory structure.
I mean, some of that might just be land development, too, right? I mean, if digging a pool is just true to this, or. See, if building a pool was true to this, didn't call.
Because we can't find it under any other.
Oh, okay, so you're trying to.
Isn't there reference to like man-made bodies of water? If we wanna be like pools and ponds, right now it just says ponds, so there's nothing over there that we can use.
Such a radical, how big is a pond? What does it become a lake?
For subdivision, I didn't know if we wanted to differentiate between a major and a minor something. Are we?
Um, well, we do, we do have that. Yeah, we do have that in Article Seven, now we have major and minor. It could be added to. If we want to just be more inclusive for the definitions, I think maybe just partitioning of two or more.
Yeah.
I think it's fine, but.
Okay. And then on that.
Keep going, yeah.
Or just, uh, we don't find a what a waiver.
Oh, I see, yeah, great guess. Very important.
There's also when it comes to waivers or requirement that you make it clear how appeals work and how they're issued and statute. If you have, if you allow waivers, you do, so we might even just add that quickly to the definition.
We could, it's a, it is an article, you know, uh, you know, I have a clause now. Yeah, just make sure to check that box. Waivers granted by the A O are subject to appeal for procedure, seven seventy.
Um, also, oh, for surface water. Um, with the, I guess this is natural channels of the intermittent brooks, streams and rivers. Um, but I was just wondering with the intermittent ponds, the vernal ponds, is that captured in?
Vernal pools are regulated strictly.
Okay, so we don't need to include that, okay. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I was just trying to need to be defined. Okay.
Oh, I see, we have a use condition, although we don't have to define this. It is. It's permanent, it's finished now. Uh, I don't think that's a part, okay.
Okay, anything else? And onto Article Two. I had uh more comments about section two oh two, which was um maps, yeah, being visible online, so the. Um, riparian buffer, it'd be great to get a map that actually shows what the riparian buffer. You do have one, okay.
It's on the A and R map, it will say some of it only shows a fifty-foot riparian buffer, when some of them are actually hundred feet. So you can measure out.
Um, yeah, no, um. I think it comes up in the conservation district or um. Um, that's specifically which ones. Are referenced, because it says, you know, what what bodies of water reference on that map? And there's like a little stream over on Heartland Hill Road that showed on the map, it doesn't have a name. But somebody put a shed like right on the stream, you know, like.
There is a riparian buffer overlay there.
Yeah.
Um, it's just the. Previous um street, which may not consider that that important.
Alright, well, this happened like three months ago. For a month ago. Yeah, it'd be great to be able to have um that as a printed map, kind of like the critical areas, like this is riparian buffers. Um, in the village, like, so you could look at your parcel and like, it's it, it's not a, kind of like.
Do you wanna say something to, like, I I was thinking about conservation district, I was through to. Um, you wanna say something in that, that's like, please refer to map, blah blah blah. That language helpful?
Uh, well, you know, if those were hyperlinks, like the riparian buffer, um.
Sure.
And the steep slopes.
Yeah.
Um, and wetlands, wetlands have more comments on later, too, wetlands, um. Aren't always very well mapped um or known necessarily.
The riparian buffer really you were talking about, this area here is the street on Heartland Hill.
Yeah.
So that's the fifty-foot buffer.
Yeah, if we could have like a physical copy of this map, like, um, that'd be awesome. Because I love the village one, I love the critical areas, even though it's. It's a minimum thing out of date, um, I think these are very helpful maps for people to look at.
Can you go back and show, I can never find this map when I go to look for it.
Absolutely, so I actually didn't open any chat because it took that rubber to load. Um. So from our own page, we just hover over community development planning, it's the Woodstock parcel here. So it's the first item there, and we go back to this town, you can select layers on this side.
Okay, yeah, I've played with it, I just, I can't ever remember how I got.
Yeah, we should make a little. Yeah, you can expand it and look at all the different little areas, um, you can select that. You can also look at the zoning map, I turned off the village overlay just for clarity, but that's on there as well. Um, and then if you go over here, you can actually change the base map. So, this is on, I turned it on satellite imagery here, but it's typically on photographic, that's usually where it starts out. Rather than to make it satellite imagery, so you can see what you're looking at a little better, but there are a lot of tools in there.
Yeah, what Molly was mentioning earlier is the riparian buffer is actually a hundred feet from the Ottawa Beachy Gulf Street Barnard Brook in Kendra. Kadron. Um, but the map here only shows fifty. So this is a little off, if you're looking at one of those.
Yeah, you can measure out from there, but it's very clear. Um, the gray areas are all deep slopes. And these sort of tan areas are actually ten to fifteen percent slope, so we do have that map. As well, but that's only relevant for driveway.
I wonder if um, we should be adding river corridor. And not just riparian buffer, because the state looks at both river corridor, I think almost even. Um, more as far as restriction development in that area.
Is there some reason for the act two fifty exemptions we needed to look at? Like if we go to apply for tier one B.
Maybe. I mean, from Act two fifty's perspective, they don't like anything in the river corridor, sure. Um, it's like basically a black hole as far as they're concerned, um.
We do have um floodplains mapped on here, the green areas are wetlands, the yellow areas are vernal pools, so we do have all of those mapped. On here.
What ones are the vernal pools, the green?
Uh, the little yellow dots. These green areas are wetlands, uh, the lighter green is a two thousand and four environmental study that showed wetlands. Most of these maps are from the early two. Or taken from state. So, there's state maps there.
Yeah, and I, you know, I've come across wetlands that were not on the state maps that are now wetlands, and I found wetlands that were on the same apps there that are no longer wetlands. Like, so it's not, it's not really a good metric. But I think later on, there is language that says anything about wetlands or perceived potential wetlands. Yeah.
In this, yeah, draft, right now, right now, this two thousand and four map of wetlands, like anything that even remotely resembles a wetland in that map. Is regulated, we've changed in this draft because it's so out of date to deal with that problem, to just use the state's wetland inventory. So.
Yeah, alright. Anything else?
That's been addressed, we have not had river corridor standards, um, I think in a lot of cases, the river corridor is gonna overlap pretty heavily with the floodway, which is regulated. Uh, yeah, I know the state is pushing pretty hard to get everyone to do river corridor regs, so I will ask Kevin Gager about that. Because neither of us are flood guys, but. Uh, did you give me like one more minute, I'll probably find the answer to whether river corridors are required to these status. I think you're right about that. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of river corridor in Woodstock. In the village. Um, yes, river corridor bylaws. For tier one B, okay. Consistent with the state standards.
I should probably add, while we're talking about overlays, to you like. Overlays are not required to be mapped, like, they don't actually have to be reflected on the official zoning map, right? So they can just be written overlay standards, you can just say like. You just describe what type of area meets the definition of a given overlay, and obviously that presents a problem from a usability standpoint. If you then have to go hunting to figure out whether or not you're in this overlay or make a determination on your own based on. You know, A and R Atlas or some other. Um, tool, so always good, in my opinion, to have actual visual mapped areas if possible, I know that's not always. The easiest, but.
Yeah, I I'm a visual person, too, so I like to look at a piece of land and be like, where's every single piece of information I need um layered on it, so. I mean, A and R is good for that, but. Um, I think most of the people who access these regulations would appreciate the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Here is the PDF of, yeah.
And we talked a little bit in the past before, too, about the the difficulty of not having maps. Or not precisely mapped overlay districts, right? Specifically when it comes to the ridgeline district, where it's it's five hundred horizontal feet. Of the ridgeline, if you look at the official zoning map, it's just kind of this dashed, there, yeah, it's like this dashed blob around. Um, the ridgeline, which from an enforcement standpoint, how exactly is someone in the town office here supposed to figure out whether. Your project area is inside of that dash line or not, I mean, without going out and. With survey equipment, you know, it's very difficult, so.
Well, you can measure on this as well, he showed me like.
Can measure. So.
Parcel boundaries are not completely accurate. There's also like.
Yeah, and these, yeah, all these parcel. Yeah, and these, yeah, all these parcel boundaries are. For in- informational purposes only, right, this is, this is not. This would not hold up in court if you went.
Yeah.
If you went in with a boundary dispute with your neighbor and you said, well. The Vermont parcel viewer says that the line is here, like, that will get thrown out immediately, it has to be based on a survey.
So you can vaguely measure.
But if they got close enough, that could be something that.
Go out and look.
They could. Requires documentation to get a survey to show it's within five hundred feet.
Yeah, we could, the boards sometimes just require new chat analysis, so they have to prove that you can't see the home from roads. Is sort of the main goal of the. Yeah. Ridge line district.
Okay, anything else, section two?
Um, very last sentence, I think it's supposed to be completed within two years from the effective date of.
Uh, yeah, that's.
There's any. Any permit that's granted, they have two years to complete it?
Although that's construction through Brian. Yeah. This is a little overstate. Uh, this, so a permit now and statute is valid for two years. I think there's some leeway whether you make it, clean it or start it.
So, uh, then in section two oh five, we keep that at one because it's prior. Approvals. And there's no reason to change. So we. Yeah, we keep the one year standard for prior. Um, approved.
Right to amendment. Well, I mean, we're about to amend it.
Right, so, so if we adopt it. Anything that has been approved has to be.
This this might have also changed in the whole max technically, it's twenty twenty three's long. So I think two years are kind of almost happens. The state law change.
Been going with two years based on the state law change. So I think we're already passed in a vernice that would have only been affected for one year.
Okay, um, Article three, um.
That works the weeds.
Here, here we go, so, um. I guess the. Um, anything with section three oh two, we'll learn by one, just because there might be more meat in these.
Uh, well, I just had a question about you had a comment, Harry, um, there should be a ta- there should be a table at the beginning of this article that shows the use schedule.
I still intend to make that.
Okay, I was just saying like, did we get a mockup of what that would look like?
Yeah, it it'll just be a ma- a big matrix, basically, so you can see another bylaws and stuff too, but basically, it's just gonna be a spreadsheet that. Has on one axis all the dimensional standards and on the other axis all the uses, and then it'll have some kind of key to it, that's like, you know. Conditional permitted or, you know, uh, prohibited, prohibited, uh, for the uses and for the standards. Number, so you can. Theoretically, you know, just like go. Up and down the list and see what's what's possible where.
I was a little confused why you had eighty use under exempt from permitting.
Well, right, yeah, so they're not listed right now in. Each of the districts. But, you know, they are required to be approved now for state law, so.
In every district.
You can, you can make it exempt if you want, I mean. Or you can list it as permitted in every district, but.
Right.
Uh, the way it is right now, where it's just not mentioned. Probably not. The best way to go.
My concern is if it's said again, somebody's just gonna go, we just.
Well, that that is what would be if it was exams.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
They should, they should be in the administrative.
Right, so we're, we're just adding it to re- uses requiring a permit in every district. Because we have to, yeah.
It still should um through and get a permit.
Yes, you know, well, exempted would be. They just, they just do it, yeah.
Exactly, yeah, I don't think we want that, because they need to know we're doing.
Yeah, and there's certain things that get done to them statute, so if someone comes with one of those, and if you come to such, not issue of a permit. Thank you.
Yep.
I think the only reason I made that note, instead of just going ahead and adding it to each of the districts, is that I didn't want to have to remember to do that every time. Because then I would inevitably forget it for one of them, but, yeah, I can do that now.
Um, anybody have anything on section three oh two, community?
Uh, since, I mean, that's. I'll just say that that's more red spot zoning, that's.
Yeah.
There's no reason to have that district at all.
So, the question is, is if there's no reason to have that district, we're still. It's not like we could get rid of it because our future land use map. At the path, so we can't really, we can change the. Criteria in each um district, but we can't really change the.
Correct, yeah, well, I don't know.
Yeah, although I would say you can have something on future land use map, because of the land use area and future land use map. Just, hey, we decided this week what it is. You're zoning by law map. And choose to make that a, from a land use area in that town plan into a zoning district. Or you could say, no, we're not gonna do it, alright. So.
We, they're identical right now, yeah, I know they're identical right now, but.
Can I just ask a question about that, Ryan, so like, right now, the way it's used is for specifics parcels, not used per quartet district.
Yes, correct, yeah.
So.
So, yeah, like, the churches, the Masonic hall, this building is, I think, its own spot zone community district, yeah.
Yeah.
Which is not an idea, it's not a good.
And yeah, so, can I just ask, like, in terms of the order of operations, really quick? We can't do anything about it now in this provision, when we go through the future land use map, we can say. These are the districts and these are the definitions. Nothing materially changes to the places. As they are now, they're zoned differently, that community, we decided we want to zone them in whatever district they're next to, like if. Ottawa Cliche Health Foundation and the Sonic Lodge are now in, um. I don't really think what's that is, is that commercial light industrial? Maybe, or like. Right now, but like, whatever the region, like the districts is.
Yeah, because if someone bought the Masonic Lodge, you want to turn it into housing, they're literally. Yeah, in the community zoning, right, like, housing isn't even an option.
I think in the town right now, there are some community laws that we have to create. Okay, so we can't do that now, we can do that in the future land use map and then.
Why not, why can't we do it now?
I'm wondering if we can't do something now.
Yeah, why can't we just add uses requiring a conditionally use permit?
Or like, just delete all the detail that's under community and say, refer to whatever doesn't we want it to be.
So, I don't know, so the bylaws are considered a regulatory tool to implement the town plan. So bylaws cannot conflict with what's said in the town plan, if it says in the town plan, no housing allowed in this district. Now, you can't do it in the bylaws, because you said in the town plan, I don't know if that's in the town plan or not, I don't know what there is.
So are you saying we would need to read zone the community areas as. Commercial light industrial, get to a point where there is nothing remaining in the community zone, and then we can get rid of the community zone?
Couldn't the community zone just reference another district that we want them to reference, like, say. Okay, yes, the community zone exists right now, but. Please refer to the direction under. Light commercial, because that's what we want all the communities of, eventually, maybe as long as it matches with the town plan says.
I was distracted for a hot second, sorry about that, but I think I understand what you're both saying, and. Yeah, so you could basically just make. The community district or like the end district or whatever irrelevant, basically, by copying and pasting, like, the commercial light industrial. Uses and and dimensional standards into this or whatever, because then it would, in function, it would be the same. But Brian's saying it also has to comply with what the description of the future land use area is in the town. Plan, so if the town plan says the community district does not allow housing, you can't. You can't allow housing.
But do we know if the town plan references the community?
Off the top of my head, I, oh, well, it does, because the future land use map is the same as the zoning map, I don't know what. Is in the written description in the future land use chapter of what that. Yeah. It's honestly, but like, the in district and the community district are such small areas and specific parcels that I don't know if it's like. Necessarily worth figuring this out right now, just to have this be. Fixed for the next couple of years before you can change the zoning districts, but. Maybe, I don't know.
To do others.
Okay, then. Then maybe it's worth, uh, looking into. Yeah.
You can see this is town hall, it would be bound, if it's not, chapel. Saint James Church. Is an in district, so a lot of just little picking up parcels here.
Yeah. They're not really districts.
No, it's not, it's. But the future land use map from the town plan. I mean, it doesn't state, but it's not a map.
Page one fourteen, but it actually does not list anything about community in there, goes through the other districts, but it doesn't actually say anything about.
Yeah, usually we. We say if you're going to establish it as a zoning district, it should be in your town plan, but you can also have districts in your town plan that are not created as zoning districts. As long as it doesn't conflict with it.
That's crazy, alright, going back crazy.
So, a lot of the people, a lot of the list of town plan in general kind of reads like what you do in like eighth grade when you're writing a paper for the first time, and you just try to stretch. Like, it says like, the li- the low density residential district is a district for low residential density.
Okay, so maybe let's put a pin in that, let's look into the town plan to see what's in there. And if we feel like there's recommendations that we can make to bolster that specifically.
Yeah, I would.
Um, okay. Um, I have issues with. Residential three acre, residential one acre, and residential. Low density, because they're so close. Like, you think there's residential three acres, like. You know, one house per three acres, but it's not, it's, you know, one house per eight thousand square feet. Um, residential one acres, um, minimum lot is. Eight thousand square feet, residential low density, the minimum lot is eight thousand square feet, so like, that's the same in every single one. For multi-unit dwellings, it changes, so it goes from eight thousand to fifty four to forty five. And the setback, like, slightly changes, um. You know, the the difference between low density and residential one acre is, you know. Uh, multi-unit dwellings, um. Yeah, it goes from fifty four to forty three thousand square feet, and the setback. I wanted to make a matrix of what the differences are, but the setback, the side and rear setback go from fifteen feet to ten feet, like, those are literally the only differences.
Um, so, yeah, I'll, I'll make a general comment on this, which is, this is only something you have to deal with because of the weird future land use thing and not being able to change the districts, I mean, I. Usually, you'd just be able to consolidate.
Wrap them all up into one, right.
Um, because it is such a subtle difference between them. I'm kind of torn, so, uh, the future land use descriptions in the town plan could be as specific as saying. Uh, we've, we, the town. Think that this district shall, uh, be lots of no smaller than eight thousand square feet or whatever. You can be that specific, you see it a lot in like rural residential districts in future land use, where they're like, this is a one acre area, like, you have to have at least one acre. Or five acres or whatever, so you you could do that, in this case, I don't, I I don't think the town plan says anything like that, I think it does. Like, kind of what I was just making fun of, like, it, it's like, this is slightly more dense than the next district, so I was trying to kind of. For the ones that I changed, a lot of these I didn't change at all from the current zoning, but for the ones that I did change, I just tried to kind of. Honor that, where it's slightly, gets slightly more and more dense in each of the districts, just to, you know. Keep in line with what the town plan currently says, but. In the future, hopefully, we can just. Simplify this.
But you didn't change, um, eight thousand square feet, the minimum lot area. In it, in it for, um, residential three acres. Yeah, minimum lot area says eight thousand square feet, but in the town plan, it does say minimum density for this land use area should be no less than three acres. Page twenty one. Unless I got things mixed up, yeah, twenty one. The minimum lot area, eight thousand square feet. Or one to, one or two household unit dwellings.
Oh, um.
And the town plan says minimum density of this land use area should be no less than three acres.
Wow, okay.
Thousand square feet was changed. Wasn't that done when we all did the housing changes?
I came on like today that was approved, so I was really.
That was done a while, were you around then, Laura? That was done a while ago.
Laura, what'd you do?
Well. I have a couple of up in that, if it's on water and sewer, it would have to be at least five minutes in a drink, right, so eight thousand square feet. Roughly, uh, minimum lot size. Some of the R three area is on water and sewer, I think. Uh, so maybe that was the rationale. Behind doing that, but, uh.
Yes.
Yeah, that is kind of.
That is what I'm recalling, yeah.
Because only area is not, um.
Right.
Yeah.
Hard to say.
I don't know, yeah, um, I certainly don't want to make it more restrictive, but it is probably technically out of compliance.
I, I didn't mention anything. No, about any.
Yeah, we, we've never followed the state's. Standards, right, so even if our town plan is wrong, still have to go about this state.
So I guess.
But the zoning could also be wrong in that case, and and if someone came along and tried to pull a permit and said, well, I'm in R three. But I'm on water and sewer, and you have to allow me to do. My project, which is denser than is technically allowed, you'd have to permit it, so I don't know what the rationale. Necessarily. Was for this in preempting that. Situation, but.
Alright, well, yeah, my general comment is really that. Again, these are redundant, um, zoning things, and I guess we really can't change it. Um, is, um. I think I asked this before, Harry, but the projects in areas with water and sewer access. Like, defining what really that means as far as. You know, is it a minimum distance, and I think you said there's a thousand feet for. You're within a thousand feet, you have to hook up to a sewer, like, um, how do you define what has access?
So this was.
Like, the edge of the parcel has access.
Excellent, uh, problem that is a gray area in the home act, that is, I I don't think has really been resolved yet, because I believe. The exact wording is areas with water and sewer, it's not district with water and sewer, it's not parcels with water and sewer, areas of water and sewer, so. In practice, I think. What you would do would be.
And also access doesn't necessarily mean that they're hooked up.
Correct, it would be capacity to serve.
To capacity to serve, so like. Someone who could hook up to the system doesn't mean they necessarily have to.
Yeah.
Because that has happened, we've had an application like that.
The, the current bylaw says that if you're within one thousand feet of the sewer line, you have to connect to the sewer. So in practice, I would say. In making that determination for sewer, that's, if you're within a thousand feet of a sewer. Then that area is served by sewer and water, or sewer. With water, that's a bit of a trickier question, obviously, at the moment. Um, so I don't know, it's a gray area.
Yeah, there's, there's both, I mean, I don't know if the inside of the ordinance relating to water, or sorry, sewer. Connections, uh, in the village area, if there's like a thousand feet rule or something like that, you have to connect to it.
I actually don't think in the village bylaw, there's anything that says you have to connect to the water system, probably because the water system was not. And unable to gain connected to for so many years.
But it is something that we discussed for our last election, we're getting, as we discussed, we had the finance committee come to give the presentation on the rate card, and something we talked about. Um, was revising the water ordinance to mandate a distance similar to where it's hooked up as well. Right now.
So you're thinking about doing that through ordinance, so it's not something we need to.
Well, yeah, yeah, because we already have a water ordinance, although if you recommend doing it through bylaws, I, you know, I. Trust your professional recommendation, okay.
Yeah.
I think we're in a tricky position now with water, just because it depends what type of protection we could. We could connect to the system. Like if we're talking about like. Single family or multi-unit homes, that's one thing, if we're talking about, uh, uh. You know, like a brewery or a supermarket, then we might have to have a different conversation. Would not be able to meet the bylaw requirements. Until we address the.
All right, um. Keeping this on track, anything else? Residential three acres, residential one acre. Residential of density. Residential medium density, residential high density.
I will, I just wanted to make note of the fact that, um. For people's identification that. The way that we're doing minimum lot area calculations. In this, uh, article is a bit weird. But that's because we're trying to. Reconcile these multiple different things, which are the funky future land use and zoning map, right? Water and sewer availability and the states. Uh, you know, five units per acre on water and sewer areas along with. Allowing up to four units where any single unit is allowed, so there's all these conflicting requirements now. And so the math is a little bit wonky and, and, and what we're. In how I've written the minimum lot area, I mean, some of what we're talking about here is really density, right? So you'd have. In a normal, you would have a minimum lot area. Requirement and a density requirement separately, but this is getting weird because now the state says you have to allow. On the same lot size up to four units, right? So the way it's written where it's eight thousand square feet for one, two or small multi-unit, which was the definition that was already in the bylaws, that's. Three to four units. Uh, is eight thousand square feet, same requirement throughout the four units. For every unit over four, we're requiring an additional forty-three, oh wow, somebody's. For every unit over four, you require an additional X square feet for you, five, so that basically acting as your density requirement. So because it scales the size of lot that's needed depending on the number of units, right? Normally that would be a separate thing, but. That would conflict with the minimum lot area for projects up to four units. I hope, I hope this makes sense.
Yeah.
It doesn't make sense, but that's. It's, it's clunky right now is what I'm trying to say, but I think it's as clear as possible that.
Limit was taken out in R one, so there really isn't that cap anymore. For the minimum lot area, it's just eight thousand square feet for residential uses.
Right, but I don't think multi-family.
The other ones go on to define.
Well, that's interesting, yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
Is that only for that district? So multi-family move to. Approved with site plan.
You, you had the comment, like a site plan approval process is a much easier process than conditional use. So if there's a district, you know, that we want to have, should be a site plan review. Or for the, if there's a use of the land that we want, it should be a site. Plan approval versus a conditional use approval.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering why, I get it, you. I'm wondering why there is no density requirement like Stephanie is saying, is what I'm trying to figure out right now.
In R ones?
Looks like R and D has.
Oh no, sorry, it does, it.
Yeah, so fifty-four hundred. R and D does.
Okay, well, I would catch us somewhere where I did not do that same thing. Because otherwise there would, yeah, essentially be unlimited.
Resident, um, residential high density, you just have forty-three, fifty-six square feet. For residential uses. No. That's the only one that doesn't have like.
The density.
Yeah. What's forty-three, fifty-six?
I think possibly what we talked about. I think what we talked about in the first round. Oh yeah, it's actually in my comments, okay, so. The dimensional standards will be the limiting factor to the number of units in, in that, in that district. So. Yeah, I'm looking at high density right now, um, so the, the reason that there's no like density, uh, minimum lot area requirement, that's additional based on the number of units over. Four is because. The height setback, the parking, all of that stuff.
So you can put as many units as you want and result in high density as long as it fits. Setback.
In the box, basically.
It's in the box, okay.
Which maybe you don't want that, but that's, that's what this draft is right now, so I'm glad, glad we're talking about it.
Is there? Is there any restriction on like unit size? Like, could you build? Ten studios if they fit there, or do you have to have? Enough space to have a bedroom? Bedroom, right? But a studio apartment as long as it has a window.
I think the limiting factor there is marketability, because. Yeah, who, who would buy it? I, I don't know if fighter code or anything like that necessarily has anything to say about that. And it's single family homes in states that actually have building codes for single family homes usually do have a. Floor on how small you can make a single temp, so Massachusetts, you can't have a house, you can't build a new house for four hundred square feet, Massachusetts. Vermont obviously famously has no building code for single family homes, so you can build your tiny home or whatever you want. Uh, less than four hundred square feet for a multi-family, uh, generally I have no idea. So.
Thank you for more to the rental property. And a window.
True, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's more about how you listed in the real estate listing than about what is like allowed to be habitable, yeah. So I really don't know. Yeah, I don't, I'm, I can look for fire, but I don't have something. I mean, you could make them as small as a closet, but like who's gonna buy it, right, so.
I mean, it might naturally just not be a problem, I was just. Is there a restriction on how small? Multi-family units can be.
For the purposes of this bylaw, we definitely don't say anything, and I, I actually don't know because of the dome's rule, I'm not sure if that's something we can regulate, probably not.
It's just always going to come back to conditional use and. Parking and setbacks and all that stuff, right?
Towns can adopt building codes on their own. That's actually a weird town, downtown, but they never do it. Because then you'd have to get a building inspector.
Oh, and then one last thing I did, maybe a lot is back to that Ben's question about the eight thousand square feet. Appearing on one acre, three acre.
Yep.
I get where you're going with that, but is it clearer possibly to revert back to? The lot area that you had previously. And because of your note. About water and sewer access, would there then be a comment about? This waived if. Yeah. Like, wouldn't that be simple?
You could, I mean, some towns like Windsor, the town I live in has like a, a matrix basically in every district that's like. Your category one, two or three, one is you have public water and sewer, one is you have one or the other, or two is you have one or the other, and three is you have neither. Within the same district.
Yeah.
That just, you know, is a usability issue, but. It is totally possible to do, so we could do that.
I was just wondering if that would. Alay some of the confusion when someone is looking at.
Yeah.
R one and R three, and we've seen those numbers that caught them.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm like, Harry, I don't want to make anything more restrictive.
No, I don't think it would, I think it would just be clearer.
So you're saying just add an asterisk?
Yeah.
Or just a note somewhere like, yeah.
Within. That section saying, uh. If you are on water and sewer.
Yeah, no, there's no reason you can't do that, just say this is the same district, but if you have water and sewer, if there's one sub-dimensional standards, if you don't, there's another.
Yeah.
Uh, do, do folks want me to write that in?
I would like to see more differentiation between the housing, if we're gonna.
Yeah.
If we're going to make these different housing zones, I want them to be meaningful. And not just. Weird.
Well, for the purposes of within. These two districts, the R one, actually the R one, I think is entirely within the water and sewer, those, those are really small areas. But the R three, where significant. Squaths of that doesn't have water or sewer access, should we? Separate the dimensional standards based on. I think it makes sense, I mean, it's not the most elegant thing, but.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments on like setbacks and stuff like that? Because I really largely didn't change any of that, um.
We got into that.
Yeah, okay.
Fine, yeah.
I'm going to go on now.
I was gonna go residential office.
Yeah, um, can we just get rid of that?
No.
It's literally, I mean, we already allow home occupation. And it's literally like five lots in the entire.
Yeah.
This is why I'm saying, like, if you. Maybe there, maybe you just delete the whole thing.
Well, I think if we could just make it the same as residential high density.
Right, just refer to this other district, because this is the same definition or whatever, like if that definition is acceptable.
For this. Well, and some of these also for the moment, until we can delete it. Right, like. If it's surrounded by residential, it should just be residential with some home occupation, which is allowed. Um, with an administrative permit, or. It's like the commercial mixed use.
It's, uh, in the town plan. It's a minimum of one acre there, which is not, oh wow. If it's on water and sewer.
Well, the plan predates.
Yeah, yeah.
At quarter seven, but, um. That's very interesting. So what Brian has pulled up is the future land use description of residential office districts. In the village, which said that minimum density for this land area should be no less than one acre.
Well, um, the ones I'm looking at don't seem.
No, none of those parcels are complying with that right now, so. Weird.
Well, you shouldn't get very specific in your future land use area descriptions. To say generally, we think that should be for this space.
Yeah, my recommendation was changing the density to be the same as residential high density, because they're all right adjacent to it. You have it at fifty-four, I was gonna say forty-three, fifty-six, make it the same, but if we.
Is there a consensus on that? Do you wanna?
Is everyone fine with that? Right now it's fifty-four, forty-five, I'm saying forty-three, fifty-six, because it's all right next to residential high density anyways.
Is it? But it's also kind of simple commercial.
Yeah, essential commercial kind of goes on a whole nother level though, um.
Central front, I think is like just infinity density, but you know, there's only thirty-five foot high water.
Like the stuff on Central Street, I feel like should just be central rental.
Well, we can change it now. It's really about.
I, yeah, I actually have that. Have somewhere. I don't know if we've gotten to that comment yet, but.
Was it against?
Or just, just hit me, like, we're only setting minimum lot areas for residential uses, what about our?
There, there is in no, nowhere in Article three does it have a minimum lot size for anything besides residential.
Interesting.
Once again, that is very weird.
There's no minimum lot size for light industrial or.
No, and I will, I will say for things that are conditional use, I believe minimum lot size is one of the conditions that they can place. So someone could apply for conditional use for something that's not in the use schedule, right, and then. The DRB could say your lot's not big enough.
Well, in. Commercial and industrial, there is a minimum lot area.
Also, this is weird in the town, and I'm not saying it's central commercial area established as a future land use. Area. There's like, there's a village, there's something defined as like a village area. There's somewhere, Woodstock Village area.
Is the, is, are the borders wrong the same as what they are in the zoning for central commercial?
Okay, so this is the future. The featured land use map.
Yeah.
In the town plan.
Well, that deep red right there would be, so what is that labeled as? Wherever the key is.
Oh, hang in there.
No, it's, it's somewhere. I would have made fun of that.
And then it's just like, oh, no, no.
There we go.
Oh, it is all over. See, see, you see, which it is not actually called.
It's called a different name.
Okay, so is the recommendation that we need to have a minimum lot size or we just?
Well, I think I have pointed out before that's.
Yeah.
Some of the abbreviations that are listed in the bylaw are not the same as what they are. Like, there's some real goose, um.
We'll, we'll check this all when we get to the town.
Yeah. So.
Right, so excited to work on the town plan.
Right? Okay, anything else on central commercial? Okay, commercial light industrial on page twenty-seven. I like to just point out that this does have a density bonus, or not density bonus, a density. Um, requirement.
Right.
Sorry, well, I think central commercial, is it okay that a commercial district requires conditional use for commercial uses? Every commercial. But if they're commercial this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We just leave it.
That's constantly an excellent question, I've known.
Everything, it's.
Um, the other thing is. The residential high density, by not having a density limit, there's no reason for a density bonus.
This is true. For that district.
Yeah, that district, there'd be no incentive to. To build affordable housing for a density bonus and.
That is true.
Not that that's a big area that. Can do a ton, but. Spawning that up. Okay, um, maximum lot coverage, is that just building area on page twenty-eighth, number F? Digital letter F. Is that building or is it like parking? Is it?
That is footprint of the bu- the building versus the lot area.
Okay.
Okay, that does not. Like paving for driveway.
No, not, not paving, it would be foot, footprint of the building, and I think. A lot coverage is defined, I think. I hope, um.
Don't do what?
Right wing for the lots and then who don't.
Yeah, so, and that's only, that's specific to the light, light industrial development, which, um. First of all, I'm not sure it's really defined in the schedule, but anyway, uh, that. That's neither here nor there, I guess, at the moment.
I don't see lot coverage to find, no, it's not.
Is it not? Is it, is it under coverage? I think it's under. Is it, is it under coverage? I think it's under.
Average, yeah, just plant coverage, yeah. They're thinking of the footprint of the building. Okay.
As expressed, yeah, so.
Gotcha.
That, so this requirement already existed, and I didn't change the number, I just clarified.
Yep.
What it meant. I think the reason it only applies to light, light industrial is like. Someone at some point, at, at some point, the planning commission decided that they didn't want a giant parking industrial building that takes up like nine percent of the block. So, that's why, you know, they don't want like a, a trucking terminal or something. So. They, they can be.
Anything else, commercial light industrial? Uh, in line industrial, I had to note that the density fifteen hundred square foot per residential use u- unit is listed under. Commercial light, or light commercial uses. If that was supposed to be moved down, so letter D seven. A says office, and then it says fifteen hundred square foot per residential unit. I don't know if that's supposed to be put down by. Uh, letter E.
I'm sorry, are we still in commercial?
That fifteen hundred square foot for residential, not sure whether that's.
Oh, um.
It seems like that should go down in E, kinda like commercial light industrial.
Yeah, that's a formatting goof, thanks. That would be a. Well, depends on how you look at it. You must have at least fifteen hundred square feet. For residential, a land area for residential. Um, but yeah, that. I don't know why that's up there, floating in space like that, that should be up there. That should be under the dossier.
Okay, keep going in district. Your comments about the ten guest rooms, do we have to add? That that's specific to an inn?
Is that out of compliance with the short-term rental definitions? Well, I mean, that's a weird thing anyway. Well, y- yeah, I guess. Guess it's all kind of a move on, but um. What'd you say the definition of ins, hotels and ends was? Oh, but right, I see, okay, so even. B and Bs are allowed by site plan, but in this district, it says.
So we shouldn't even need that, right? Cause it's defined if it's an inn.
Yeah, yeah, we could just strike.
Okay.
One, a detached apartment is actually in eating here, we don't have detached apartments.
And then the other thing on hotels or in district, I would say that maximum building height should be forty feet, everywhere else it's forty feet. I don't see a reason to have any difference, anything besides the same everywhere. Anybody have any?
I just have a lot of wives. Yeah, I'd love you to.
Yep.
Why does the retail shop have to be in the main structure? That's come up a lot. Why does the restaurant? Have to be in the main structure? Why does expansion require conditional use approval? By the planning commission? That should be administrated, like, there's so many, so many things.
Or at least site, or at least not by the planning commission.
Yeah, not by the planning commission, yes.
And why the restaurant capped at three seats per guest room? This comes up a lot, we've had quite a few ends that. They wanna add a retail store at a restaurant, and it's really, it's really restricted.
Weird.
It couldn't have been ins in the village, though.
No, they weren't.
Okay, I was gonna say.
But they're copy in.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I think there's a lot of wise, I think we maybe just not go into it. Um, for the focus of this rewrite. Plan developments. My, um, um, page thirty-one, general standards. I had questions of this, I'm kind of hairy too. Um, the comment, use numbers if this is staying in, so the site conditions that reduce the amount of developed land shall be used when determined appropriate density increase. Such conditions include wetlands, rear slopes, and one hundred year floodplain. So. I think. There are, are two things that, there are certain conditions. That. Development within the one-year funding, a lot of times is allowed, as long as it just meets certain requirements, so that in itself doesn't seem like you should eliminate. The density calculation based on that. Um, same with severe slopes, you can build on severe slopes as long as it's designed the right way. Uh, wetlands, um, if it's less than half an acre on a class two wetland, the state does not regu- regulate development of those areas. I was coming at it from a perspective, if we're trying to increase as much density in the village. As possible, what is the purpose of having? That in there, um, when I asked Harry, essentially it was, it's a way of limiting. Density, um, so if somebody has like, you know, a ten acre site and nine acres is. You know, a wetland, we'll just say that, um, it restricts somebody from building the density on that last one acre. My question is, why would we be opposed to that? This would be getting the density we want, or getting the development want. I mean, it's still not gonna happen on the land that restricts it.
Yeah, can I give a quick general comment?
Yeah.
There's a lot of problems with this entire section. As I think I've said before, I don't think it's. Going to be. A section of this bylaw that is. First of all, a lot of our app that we are using or U D sections, and I, I think they're almost never used.
Right.
It's.
I would say, do, do we as the planning office sign it to be a PUD? Does the applicant choose? Is it an overlay, the use, like, what, what is it?
The applicant would apply specifically, yeah. And it has to go through conditional use into that interview. Yeah, yeah. Cause it's like, it's basically like, you can do density higher than the base density. Of the district by going through the P U D process.
Yeah, P U D processes are much more common than like. Spurvent or encervant areas or something like that, gotta get attractive land, I wanna subdivide and create a bunch of new housing and parcels on it. So they can go through like the review process for all of that at once, instead of going individually for every phase of it.
Well, or as I think I've said before, it's. Specifically really for, um. It's more of a conservation measure, really, than a producing dense housing, because it's, it's meant to be, I have a large parcel. And the town has created this P U D provision because. You can. Take the density from this larger parcel and cluster a bunch of buildings together in one corner, and that retains the open space, then. You know, the undeveloped areas of that. Indefinitely, basically, you know, forever. While making better use of a smaller area, building more fishery, that type of thing. So it doesn't really make sense for the village, in most cases, it's. It's often used to preserve like farmland, fields, open space, stuff like that, that's theory anyway, it's not really used very often at all.
Yeah, that's what like ACCD wants. It's used for in Vermont, but. I don't really know how much like smarter of, has will actually come in all of this, like they intend to do.
How does it compare to the new subdivision?
A P Z wouldn't be subdivided. Technically. It would be common ownership, it'd be, it would be a condo development essentially, or. Or rentals.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's problematic, I don't know. Hey, I can see it's about preservation, but like those three things. It seems like those three things, it's not about preserving those, it's more about. So if you said, like, you can calculate the one hundred year floodplain in your density. That's. As it reads, that's what it is, right? Like, so if I have ten acres and nine acres is a one hundred year floodplain, I can't make a plan you in development on that. One acre. I think that's what you'd want to have, right? You'd want them to be able to like, oh, I can take that density. And not use it on the floodplain and put it in the one acre that's.
Yeah, fair enough, yeah.
I don't know, like.
I mean, there's a lot of stuff, uh, there's a lot of stuff like that in this entire section, I'll say, it's, it's very, it's a. Effective process that someone wanted to go through, um. And you know, it's all conditional, so there's no guarantee that it would be approved, and it's a lot of due diligence for something to go through to maybe not get approved. So I think that probably contributes to why it's not something that's invoked very often.
Do you think it opens? Since it's conditional use. What makes it harder is that there's a higher or a lower bar for somebody to oppose. Oppose it, and then just to party to oppose it, is that why? Or is it more the board has more reasons to deny it?
Well, yeah, it's like anything else we've talked about, right? It's just like anything, the more discretionary it becomes, the more opportunities, the more roadblocks there are, right? I don't know. A little bit before my time. But, uh, I mean, there's a whole section in statute devoted to planning unit developments. And. It, as I'm like rereading this section here real quick. As long as, uh, the application follows the guidelines outlined in that section, it should be approved. And it does give you more flexibility than would otherwise be allowed in bylaws. Yeah, I don't know what example to point to. I, I'll say the fir- the first time we went through this, uh, I said, just cut this completely, cut this entire section from the village bylaw, because it's. Not something that people are gonna use. So I'm a little, a little bit torn on what.
Yeah.
Can we just cut it?
Of course, yeah, you, yeah.
I admit that I have. Feelings that it is potential in certain plots. I'd say in the town.
Yeah.
I think it technically would be applied to, um. Certain parcels in the village that, um, it is worth enough keeping in.
Anyway, going back to this one specific comment about. Site conditions that are, yeah, I mean.
Cause that, as it reads, it says site conditions that reduce the amount of development shall be used when determining the appropriate density increase. So again, like in this scenario, ten acres, nine acres of wetland. Your density is only based off that one acre, am I reading that correctly? It's not based off of. Or you're actually using that wetland area to calculate your density?
No, 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 this is saying, yeah, that would be subtracted from the parcel size. Yeah, and you're correct, that none of these things are. Make up. Plot like inherently undevelopable, so if the point is to conserve. Open space and build where it makes sense to build, then yeah, it should, I, I would agree that it shouldn't be deducted. My. Like. I guess. Technical reason for making note of this is. That it doesn't say. Any numbers like. Site conditions shall be reduced when determining the appropriate density increase, and it says it may be increased twenty-five percent. Or up to fifty percent. So, but like, how much land it means it's. Coincides with how much of a density increase, it doesn't, I don't, they copied that right off the statute. Oh, did they?
Yeah.
So V D R B determines if it's twenty-five or fifty?
Right. Well, affordable housing development is a state. Term that we have defined here too, and that like, that like says. What percentage I think of the units have to be affordable and to what degree they're affordable, so that's, that's not my problem, but um.
So this density requirement is only talking about. Affordable housing density increase, it's not talking about the overall density. Of the site. So there's no restriction of the site, like, going back to my example, ten acres, acres of white land. If, if, there's, there's nothing in here that restricts somebody from using all ten acres in their dense.
This, this relates to the density bonus.
Bonus.
Yes, it does not relate to.
So there's no definition of what the actual density. Of a site is in this. Like, as of now, you can calculate everything. But for affordable.
The density is the density down the line, district.
Yeah, but the affordability. Why would you restrict it for affordable housing? The density bonusing. Doesn't that de-incentivize somebody to build affordable housing, because you're. Having a higher restriction or a higher requirement on it?
I'm reading this as you get. A fifty percent bonus for an affordable housing development.
I think what Ben is trying to say is why do they? For that density bonus. Reduce the, um, amount of developer full land in that calculation if it's in a conservation district. So if you don't have that for the conservation district, without. When we don't do that.
I mean, just doesn't understand that whole. Um, number three.
I will say, kind of the whole incentive to do a P U D is to get a density bonus, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you have a seventy-five acre parcel hypothetically. And you wanna do a cluster development and take that overall density, you say it's five units an acre, and you wanna build twenty-five units. As an apartment building, instead of doing twenty-five, a twenty-five parcel subdivision. You can do that right now, you don't need to do a P U D, you just build a twenty-five unit building in one corner of your seventy-five acre lot, right? That's not a P U D. Cause it complies with the overall density. Already, right? Do you see what I'm saying? So like, the point, the incentive for you to do a P U D is to get a density bonus. Otherwise, it's just an apartment building that complies with the density requirement.
Yeah, it's generally to, to create a more dense development that would otherwise be allowed in the underlying building.
Right, it's too incentive us people to not subdivide.
Yeah.
Cause you get more units out of it. And this is a very, very honest process. Trying to go through.
But why are we reducing that density bonus if the site has conservation?
I am gonna put a pin in this.
Does the commission think that we should strike the second sentence? And maybe just make one density bonus? Or, or still have the two-tiered density bonus, one per. You know, one is the base incentive for doing a P U D, the second is a higher incentive for doing affordable housing in a P U D. And then we just give rid of the. Deductions. Sentence.
To, to me, it reads as if you're, if. Something is in a wetland. And if I'm asking the same question again, I apologize, if something's in a wetland, they're allowing you to calculate that for affordable housing density bonus. Is that, am I reading that correctly or incorrectly?
I don't know of anywhere else in the bylaw that says, you know, there's somewhere in here, there's a. Or normally, there would be a clause about how we calculate density and lot size, and I believe we do have that in here. And that's where it would normally say, like. Some towns do do that, where it says if your parcel's in certain restricted areas or whatever, we're subtracting that from the size of the lot when we calculate your density. I don't think there's anything in this bylaw currently that says that anywhere but here.
Yeah, I don't think so either, yeah, yeah.
It does happen in other towns, I don't think it's necessarily fair, and. You know, density is density, if, if you wanna exploit the size of your parcel to build. You know, all of the units that you're allowed to build in one corner and keep the other space. You know, all of the units that you're allowed to build in one corner and keep the other space open. As far as I'm concerned, that's your argument, but. And we shouldn't punish you for, you know. Keeping those open spaces open, but. Especially cause some of these things are not things that prohibit you from building, as you're saying, right then, so otherwise you could just subdivide. And you could still build the house in a wetlands. Or like or in a class two wetland or in a hu- in in the hundred year floodplain or whatever provided you met those restrictions, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, this kind of does go against the whole ethos of the P U D in the first place. I can sense we're all running out of steam here. Leave off there.
Yeah, leave off there, um. Thank you, everybody, um almost made it to Article four, um. Uh which we did not think we were gonna get through, um anyway, so I think just as our original. Lofty goal was um. Now originally, I think we had three, three meetings kind of set aside, and you know, we do whatever it takes, but um. The goal in our next two meetings kind of go through. Uh, the rest of the bylaws and then hopefully votes, um. And hopefully we can get to a kind of rel- like usual resolution by. So we got October and then November, um it'd be great if by December we're able to um. Uh kind of move forward with um the full draft. Um, I think it's good noting like, anything that is gonna keep somebody from not approving it. Being, you know, make sure that you are speaking up and resolve the issue so that we can get um. A consensus to kind of push things through, so hopefully you don't really have too many of those hot button items. Didn't seem like we had any really tonight, um it's good. Um and with that, I'm going to have to unfortunately step down as chair, um. And uh, I don't know if there's actually an official thing I have to say or. I'll turn in my my keys to the city, um. Uh it was a pleasure being chair, um and uh it was great kind of meeting us, um again, I have to say this is such a great planning commission to be a part of. I'm very interested people and engaged, um. Um robust. Um, yeah, um energy on the board, so I'm great, um so I'm gonna sit down. Thank you, Ben, and yeah, you're welcome, um. And we'll open up the floor if anybody wants to make any nominations, so the basically the process is we have to vote on it, so um we have to make a motion to nominate somebody. Somebody has a second and and then we call a vote, um. And so does anybody want to have any discussion or? Comments, otherwise, without further ado, I'm gonna nominate Sarah as chair. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Megan, Matt, are you on and and listening?
Yep, I'm on.
Right, so motion has been made and taken in um for Sarah to be chair, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Aye, Megan, did you vote? Aye, okay, perfect, that is a four vote, uh motion has been passed, um congratulations, Sarah. Very, very happy to have you as chair, it can be great, so.
We'll get a gavel. All right.
We'll get a gavel. Um, so I'll leave the rest of the meeting to you, you got four minutes, what do you wanna do?
With that, I think we should just adjourn.
There isn't, you don't need to, you don't need to.